All right. Thank you for everybody who attend, who's attending today.
Thank you, Mr. Burrell.
We don't feel so lonely in here. Today, this is a special meeting for the hearing of the, the Constitutional Carry Ordinance. Today is Thursday, March 6, 2025, and the time is 6:01. Will the clerk please, Deputy Clerk, please take the roll call?
Commissioner Muriel.
Here.
Commissioner Milligan.
Here.
Commissioner Brennan.
Here.
Commissioner Anaya. We do have a quorum.
All right. Thank you. Those of you who wish, aim for the invocation and the pledge.
Almighty God, thank you for this day. Thank you for your blessings. We pray for wisdom and guidance in all things. We pray as we consider things that are our rights, and we ask that you give us the words and, and the reasons why we need to protect these things that you've given us. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Mexico and the Z, a symbol of perfect friendship among the United cultures.
I'd be glad when allergy season is over. All right. Is there any changes or objections to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Do we have any public comments?
I guess I mean to go get the two.
Name an address, and you have the floor.
Number six, Petrius Court, Edward. Just a ground little question. This is a public hearing, so if I ask a question that's appropriate, I get an answer, right?
Well.
Mr. Chair.
Or comment. If it's, if it's not sensitive or confidential information, if it's a general question or comment regarding this ordinance, can I expect an answer?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I believe during the public comment portion of the public hearing, it is possible for someone to answer the question.
Right. And yeah, so when we go into the actual hearing for the ordinance, then there is the public statements, and you have more time with those. It's five minutes.
I'm just wondering if mine comments will be better off in discussion?
Oh, I see what you're saying. Once the motion's been made, you're, oh, I.
Mr. Chair.
I've never been asked that before, but that's a good question.
Um, sorry to interrupt, but with the, with the public hearing, it will be, I believe there is time for public comment during that, but it is at the pleasure of the commission. If you'd like to hear the questions now, I'm sure as a governing body, you could vote to answer these questions at this time and hear it.
Okay. So, short, in short, yes.
Great. Great. Thank you. This hearing is quite serious. There are public safety issues that include loss of life. Listening to comments at the January 28th Regular Commission meeting, quote, "Past administrations have been very hostile to citizens who wish to exercise their rights." The basic pro-administration had Edward at the fourth safest, smallest city in New Mexico. So what administration has been called out? Today's town administration, in a transparent fashion, transparency, here comes a question. Please describe the supporting evidence, documentation, that a pre-feasibility study for local government, public safety ordinance, key areas to consider: technical feasibility, legal feasibility, operational feasibility, social impact analysis, community, community needs assessment, and an impact risk assessment. A risk assessment is considered a best practice to conduct one to identify potential negative impacts, legal challenges, and community concerns before enacting the law. Did any of these administrative controls take place?
During this part of public comment, we're not supposed to respond, so.
And to finish that, is with the, with the creation of this ordinance. Okay? So where's the supporting documentation? Where's the transparency? Part two. This comes right out of the New Mexico sketches, okay? I was walking in this building. I have a library off to the left. I have a public administration building, a town hall up to the right. Okay? This property is owned by a school district. Risk assessment. Unlawful carrying of a deadly weapon on school or library premises. There's always exceptions. Do you have an exception from the school district? There's playyards, there's ball fields, there's social activities for young people on this property. What in this ordinance makes the public more safe?
Mr. Burrell, a time.
That's time?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, when we go into the hearing itself.
Summary, I'll start to close this down. The same 28th meeting, just before the resolution and the adoption for this ordinance was approved, being poised to enjoy on your own code of conduct and, and things like that, or maybe dry stuff like that. So in summary, the enactment of the Constitutional Carry Ordinance by the Town of Edward, which conflicts with New Mexico state law, constitutes a violation of your own ethical standards by elected officials and staff. This action undermines public trust, transparency, and the adherence to legal and ethical obligations. Violation of state law, public trust and transparency, conflict of interest in ethical conduct, adherence to ethical standards, those I drew out of your resolution, 2025-10, and 2025-11. We can do that. Hopefully, this ordinance can be improved, and with this digital technology and force protection techniques, that there's probably a lot better solution than what we see tonight. I really hope that it works that way, because I just think that it wasn't looked at, I think it was looked at with personal intent. So that's all I have to say right now. I trust me that I'm sincere with this. I really think that there's probably a much better solution to, to everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. That'll close out the public comment section. All right. Now we'll open the public hearing, and the time is 6:12. So we have a proposed ordinance, the 2025-001 Constitutional Carry Ordinance. Mr. Burrell.
Would you like me to read the ordinance or just go into the reasoning behind it?
Go ahead, and we got the time. Go ahead and read the.
All right. So the proposed ordinance, 2025-01, Town of Edward Constitutional Carry Ordinance. The purpose. The purpose of this ordinance is to codify the Town of Edward's recognition and affirm, affirmation of the constitutional right to carry firearms, either openly or concealed, without requiring a government permit, as protected by the Second Amendment to the United States Constitution. This ordinance seeks to ensure that constitutional carry is upheld within the town limits, while promoting safe and responsible fire ownership and compliance with applicable state and federal laws. Section one, definitions. Constitutional carry refers to the legal carrying of a firearm, either openly or concealed, without the requirement of a government permit. Section two, right to constitutional carry. The governing body for the Town of Edward hereby affirms the Second Amendment right of the people to keep and bear arms, including the right to constitutional carry as protected by the United States Constitution. Constitutional carry of a firearm shall not be infringed upon within town limits, in accordance with the Second Amendment and applicable case law. Section three, restrictions. Nothing in this ordinance shall be construed to allow the carrying of a firearm in locations where it is prohibited by state or federal law. This ordinance shall not apply to individuals who are prohibited by law from possessing firearms. Section four, education outreach. The governing body for the Town of Edward encourages educational programs and resources to promote safe and responsible firearm ownership and use among residents. Section five, enforcement. This ordinance shall be enforced by the town's law enforcement officers. Violation of this ordinance may result in fines or penalties as determined by the governing body for the Town of Edward. Section six, effective date. This ordinance shall take effect immediately upon adoption by the governing body for the Town of Edward. Section seven, repeal. Any prior ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section eight, amendment. This ordinance may be amended from time to time by the governing body for the Town of Edward by a majority vote of the members present and voting at a regular meeting, provided that notice of the proposed amendment is given in accordance with state law. Section nine, conflict. In the event of a conflict between the provisions of this ordinance, any other town ordinance, the provisions of this ordinance shall prevail. So that's the ordinance that we're hearing tonight. So for me, this is very important, and I have some prepared statements for it, and just to kind of give the, the history and the scope and, and why we are doing this. So first, so the Second Amendment, unfortunately, most people don't read the Constitution, so I'll read the Second Amendment here. "A well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." This is our, the Second Amendment, it was part of the Bill of Rights. George Mason, considered the father of the Bill of Rights, set in a Virginia ratifying convention in 1788. When the resolution of enslaving America was formed in Great Britain, the British Parliament was advised to disarm the people, that it was the best and most effectual way to enslave them, but that they should not do it openly, but weaken them, and let them sink gradually by totally disusing and neglecting the militia. So a founding father of our country gave the reason why we needed the Second Amendment. New Mexico is completely disregarding our rights with the proposed SB 279 bill that's in legislation now. It is prohibiting law-abiding citizens from owning commonly-used firearms. It completely is ignoring U.S. Supreme Court ruling, such as Heller and McDonald. New Mexico itself is inconsistent with how they apply the rules and the laws that we have. For example, Santa Fe County has chosen to disregard federal immigration in the recent Santa Fe County Resolution Number 25. While at the same time lawmakers are pushing these aggressive gun control measures, SB 279, what they're looking to do is criminalize law-abiding citizens, American citizens, and protecting those that break the laws. Santa Fe County Resolution protecting illegal immigrants. As Americans, we get less rights, while others get more protections. The U.S. Constitution is above the New Mexico State Constitution. The reason I say that is if you go to the New Mexico Constitution, section one, "The state of New Mexico is an inseparable part of the federal union, and the Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of the land." Finally, I'd like to talk about what happened in the past. So our current governor, Michelle Gresham-Luhan, in defense of a temporary gun ban across Albuquerque, replied to a reporter who stated, who questioned whether she was upholding her oath to the Constitution. She said, quote, "No constitutional right, in my view, including my oath, is intended to be absolute," end quote. Today, March 6, the New Mexico Supreme Court issued a 3-2 split decision in the Amador versus Gresham. It's upholding most of Governor Michelle Luhan's public health emergency orders from 2023. This lawsuit was filed in September 2023 to challenge the governor's unconstitutional overreach, including her attempt to ban the legal carrying of firearms in public spaces under the guise of public health emergency. The two dissenting Supreme Court justices, New Mexico Supreme Court justices, dissented, and point is needed. It's protecting our rights. To own and bear an arm is not only a right, it is our duty. I yield.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Milligan?
Nothing at the moment, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner McCracken, we, we received a response from the municipal league's attorneys on this.
Mr. Chair, yes, we did. I can read it into record if that's okay with everyone, or I can just summarize it.
Please.
Okay. I did have it pulled up, so just give me just a second. So this is from the municipal league. They, I did ask them to review the ordinance, and he said that the Self Insurance Fund, we've received the resolution ordinance, and our general feedback is that passing these matters could subject your municipality to legal challenge on at least a few fronts. First, the state constitution does possess language limiting municipal, municipal regulatory authority in these areas. No municipality shall regulate in any way an incident of the right to keep and bear arms. See Article 2, Section 6, New Mexico Constitution. While you could argue that since the language you've drafted does not change in any many meaningful way, the underlying right it references, using an argument similar to that deployed in the Moberg matter, use of the term "in any way" in the Constitution deserves some attention. Perhaps the easiest way to help avoid negative attention is to take a second look at the clause in both regulation and ordinance that read along the lines as follows, or read along lines of follows, without requiring a governmental, government permit. As to at least the discussion on concealed carry licensure for same is directly in-state statute, C-section 29-19-1, NMSA 1978, I would at least take that part out because you'll not in resolution or ordinance be able to override the black letter law. And that was the feedback from the Self Insurance Fund.
What was the line again? They said we should remove?
Um, without requiring a government permit. It sounds, my, my understanding from this is that the permit is required, and that's a black letter law that we wouldn't be able to override.
Okay. Now, I have talked to a few people. I've talked to a couple of law enforcement officers, and I wanted to go outside of the Town of Edward to get a non-biased opinion. And it actually, it was pretty much a split decision, but the one thing that was prevalent is training. The biggest fear is just letting anybody go down, get their gun, carry it in their waistband, not knowing how to use it, not knowing what the laws are that require, because you could easily, if you, you go in and you're carrying a gun, you go ahead and you pull it out, and you just hold it up like this, that's brandishing, and you just violated the law, and you can be arrested. A lot of people don't know that. And the only way they get to know that is if they go through the training. Now, on the concealed carry permit, it does require, it's a two-day training class. I've been through it twice, actually two full classes and the refresher class. You have to take a refresher class every two years. Your permit's good for four years. And that training does go over all those aspects, when you can and cannot use your firearm, how can you, how to handle your firearm, how to, you know, properly carry your response. You're, they also go heavily into self-defense. An untrained person without intent can get themselves into serious trouble, and I don't, I, myself, I would not want to see that. And that's why I'm not a big fan of being forced to carry a permit, but I am a major fan of making sure everybody who wants to carry a gun has proper training. Even in the military, they do not send you out into the field with a gun until you've been trained on how to use it and the proper care of that weapon. Same thing, same things here. The, the right for everybody to own and bear arms is absolute. They have that right, and I do not disagree with that. They should be able to carry their weapon at any time they want to, and in this day, open carry is allowed. When you get into the concealed carry portion, that's where we come into problems. Without the proper training, you're, you're going to make mistakes, and mistakes with a firearm can cause, causes life, is a, you know, loss of life. You know, even when you go to drive a car, you have to have at least a license to demonstrate that you can properly, you know, drive an automobile. And we don't, we don't, we don't limit the type of automobile you can drive. There are limits onto the class of vehicle. You know, you, you get your regular driver's license, there's a motorcycle permit, then you have your CDL, which goes on the different size of vehicles. But all of that is to make sure that the person is properly trained to drive that vehicle, and that is for the overall safety of everybody, not just the person who is driving that vehicle, but everybody on the road. Same thing here with the weapons. This is, the training is not for just the safety of everybody else, but also for the safety of that individual. Without training, you're opening yourself up to a lot of issues and problems you, you really don't want to get into. I wish there was, I wish there was some sort of system where instead of having concealed carry permit, you, all you had to do is carry your training identification card saying, "You've been through the training." And I know a lot of people don't like the concealed carry permits because it is another document, a government document, and it is tracked. So if you get pulled off, I have a concealed carry permit. I am allowed to carry my weapon anytime I want concealed, and I know the rules that I have to follow. If I get pulled over by a police officer anywhere, not just New Mexico, anywhere, when they go and pull up my, my tags on my vehicle, they're going to find out who the owner of that vehicle is, and it's going to come up that the owner of that vehicle has a concealed carry. So that gives that officer that, you know, that certain amount of caution, okay, this person could be possibly carrying. And that is for the protection of the officer. With, without that, and just letting anybody be able to carry their weapon concealed, where we are putting officers in danger. But if they have the proper training, that's a different story. But if we just openly go ahead and say, hey, anybody can go ahead and carry concealed, that, they're not going to go out and get that training. Responsible people will. But we already know the, a large portion of the population doesn't necessarily take that responsibility. And that's a sad thing to say, but that's just, that's just the facts. And that's all I got to say on the subject. Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Burrell.
Commissioner Brennan, I, I agree with you. There was nothing that I necessarily disagreed with you about. I think it's just a matter of different perspectives on, on duty versus how we interpret those things. And I do appreciate, you know, you thought this through, and I appreciate that about you. You're very thoughtful, and I agree. But to address a couple of things that, where I dissent and disagree, is regarding concealed carry permit, it's the difference of a shirt. it's the difference of a shirt over your gun and your shirt tucked in at the end of the day. If your shirt's long enough, you're, you can, you can conceal a, a very large pistol, for example. I've, I've seen folks have concealed large platform rifles. It was interesting, not a useful way to do it, but okay, that's what that person had chosen to do. Um, so again, I think whether it's a shirt covering it or a shirt tucked in, I don't think that changes people's right to carry. I, I don't agree with people having to get a permit to have a firearm. It's just one step closer to taking away people's Second Amendment rights, in my opinion. Initial gun laws that were initially instituted in this country was to disarm slaves, was to disarm the African-American population, is when you started seeing large pushes for, uh, gun control activities. The other thing is, is I do appreciate that you did go and talk to other law enforcements outside of Edgewood. I think that's important. But I did speak with the chief of police for Edgewood. I've spoken to multiple police officers here in Edgewood, and they, they supported it, to the ones that I spoke. To share a story, I was at a red flag law training with our police department several months ago. And the assistant, I believe she was the Assistant Attorney General, came down to do a training on red flag laws. And she said, you know, "I heard Edgewood was different, and it made my heart glad." And every slide that she was forwarding through, our police officers here in Edgewood were constitutionally oriented and challenged all the statements that that person was making at the end of the day. And she shared a story with us that she had done that exact same training in Rio Rancho, and not one police officer pushed back on her. So, I think here in Edgewood, we have a police force that respects the Constitution. We have a police force that values our constitutional rights. We have a police force that goes above and beyond every day for us. And the ones that I've spoken to have wholeheartedly supported this, um, ordinance. Another thing to consider, uh, at the end of the day, when does it stop? SB 279 is banning all gas-operated firearms. The most standard caliber that people will carry, the most popular calibers are, they're trying to restrict. The only thing they're not restricting is a 22, which doesn't make sense to me because that's a very lethal round, in my opinion. Plenty of people, um, have been injured or killed by that round as well. But when does it stop? When do they say, "Okay, uh, we need to train our citizens on how to do it, but you can only go to this training that's offered by a certain department," say state police, for example. And then the state police, under the control of the governor, says, "Well, we're only offering one training a year." And you know what? It's going to happen to get canceled. How do we prevent that? We have a governor who doesn't even honor her oath to U.S. Constitution. So how do we know that this governor, or a future governor, won't do that? How do we know that our rights are going to be protected? These are rights that were given to us by God. These are not rights given to us by man. This is not a right given to us by the government. Read our founding fathers and what they said. These are rights from God. And the whole point of a government, a constitutional republic, is to protect those inalienable rights that we have. There was a reason that George Mason is considered the father of the Bill of Rights, because he understood that if those Bill of Rights weren't going to be put in at the onset, that our government would infringe on those rights immediately. When it comes to talking about licensing and permitting, because you have a license doesn't mean that you're a good person. Because you have a license doesn't mean you make a bad decision. A young driver is inexperienced and has to learn on the road. Compared to a veteran driver who's been on the road for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, their experiences are different. They have knowledge, they can pass that down, they could share that with people. But we don't tell people that, oh, you have to have a license to drive, and at the end of the day, they go and drink and drive at the end of the day. We don't say, "Oh, well, we're going to ban licenses, we're going to ban cars to everyone else," at the end of the day. No, you're, you're sheep dipping good, sane, moral, sober people for the sins of other people. If somebody goes and kills somebody tonight in a DUI accident, I don't lose my driver's license. Why do I lose my right to constitutional carry? Why do I lose my right to own a firearm? Why do I lose the right to protect myself and my family? Because somebody else made a bad decision. Why do I lose my right to protect my family? The numerous cases recently, you jump onto any national news media or social media website, and you'll see instantly. I saw a video, uh, it was, I believe it was this past month. She dropped off her kids at school, came home, and was robbed in her house. They tried to sexually assault her, and they took off because she fought for her life. What a difference it would have been, had been if she had been able to carry on person. What about the woman who defended herself and her children from thugs who entered her house looking to rape her? She put a bullet in that person and protected her family. It's a natural right to protect yourself. It's a God-given right to protect yourself. As I said, and most people know, I love the Edgewood Police Department. They are solid men and women, and I'm proud to have them serve us. But when something bad happens, the response time is not going to be what you need it to be. When seconds matter, minutes are forever. Anybody that's called law enforcement knows that you have to go through dispatch. Then those calls come to the police officer. So you're already looking at several minutes, if not dozens of minutes, before that call's even related to a police officer. Most gunfights end in three seconds. That's the, that's the national average for a gunfight in this country, is three seconds. So although I do love our law enforcement, they are not there at my house protecting my door. Although I love law enforcement, they still want to go home to their families as well. And I find it convenient at the New Mexico Legislative Session, or the New Mexico Municipality Day, when we walked up to the Capitol, we had to go through metal detectors, and to take off our watches. They had to see, "Oh, your belt has metal on it." But what did I see in there? I saw New Mexico State Police fully armed, and who are they there to protect? They're not there to protect me, they're there to protect the governor. The governor gets a personal, private security force to protect her. I'm not asking for a private security force. I'm asking that we honor what our forefathers did for us. We protect ourselves. Did you know that, uh, at the founding of our country, when a person's house was broken into and robbed, they didn't blame the criminal for that? You know who they blamed? They blamed the man in the house. It's his job to provide, it's his job to protect. They were required to have rifles, they were required to have all the ammunition and supplies to operate it. Little boys as eight, as young as eight years old were training with the militia. John Quincy Adams, one of our presidents, was training with the militia during the Revolutionary War. So when we talk about training, I'm all for it. My daughters, my sons, when they're old enough, will be trained. When he turns eight years old, he will be trained because I'm following the, what our, our forefathers prescribed for us. And at the end of the day, that's my responsibility. It's not the state's responsibility. I understand that brandishing your gun, most people wouldn't know that that's a problem unless you go through the concealed carry course, which I've gone through myself many times. However, the average American citizen commits seven crimes a week, unknowingly. That's how many laws, how many restrictions we have. When it comes to constitutional carry, to bearing arms, you can make a million different laws so that everyone violates it at the end of the day. Oh, you walked too close to the school and you're in your car. What about the man, I believe he was in Oregon? He is going through the process of fighting to keep his firearms because he was carrying a shotgun on his property. The issue? It was in a school zone. His property is part of a school zone. So again, targeting law-abiding citizens with laws that are designed to punish them. But at the end of the day, we have our county commissioner in Santa Fe signing off on a resolution that bans law enforcement from working with ICE. We have a government in New Mexico that's looking to, to, to defend illegal immigrants, then disregard federal law when it comes to our abortion ordinance. They pick and choose what laws they would like to defend. They pick and choose who the winners are and who the losers are. I carry my weapons on me because my job is to protect my family, which means also protecting myself so that I can keep serving them, to provide for them, to love them, to raise them. I carry my weapon to protect those who aren't willing to protect themselves. I carry because it's my duty to carry, because I am a man, and that's what men do. It also applies to wives, and to mothers, and to women. It's their job to protect themselves without putting anybody on the spot. But how many women have to constantly look over their shoulder? How many times do women have to say, "You know what? I'm not going to go there because it's a little too dark tonight." How many women are disadvantaged because of their size compared to a man? I'm 385 pounds, at 6'4". I could do as I please. The only thing that takes, that changes that force is a woman with a gun in her hand. Now she's equalized the playing field and actually increased her odds of survival, of not becoming a victim. And for me, having this constitutional carry ordinance here in Edgewood is a signal to our residents that our job is to protect our town. Our job is to protect each other. Our job is to protect our families. It's our job to protect our children. Are there people out there that are evil? Absolutely. We live in a fallen world, and there are evil people out there. They do not care to follow the law. How many people go into Walmart knowing that they're going to go and pay for their bills, or pay for their food, or the items they get? If you've lived in Edgewood long enough, and you go to Walmart plenty of times, I've seen many a people just grab stuff and run out of there. I've seen it happen at the Smiths, get out in there running. I'm not saying, "Go shoot that person." I'm not saying that you should interact, that'd be foolish. What I am saying, though, is there are people who follow the rules, and there are people who don't follow the rules. Smiths shouldn't stop selling me eggs, which I can't afford now anyways. They shouldn't be, stop selling me eggs because some knucklehead is out there stealing eggs. In my mind, there is no defense that's reasonable to say that you can't bear a firearm. Whether you want to carry concealed or open carry, I don't care. I prefer concealed because I want to be the gray man. I don't want to draw attention to myself, which is hard. 385, 6'4", black beard, Mexican, pretty hard to blend in at the end of the day. I understand that. But I don't want to bring extra attention to myself. That's my choice. I also see the other point where you want to open carry. You're letting people know, "Hey, I am not to be messed with. This place is going to be secure, and if you attack me, there's going to be a fight." So there's pros and cons to conceal and open carrying. Personally, in my opinion, I believe that Americans should own whatever firearm or weapon that's for military use, should be allowed to own it. It was standard practice that people would own cannons and fire them off on 4th of July. That's a military weapon, they're allowed to do it. To bring it to modern-day examples, in my opinion, if you own a 50-caliber, uh, weapon and you'd like to mount it on your truck, A-OK in my book. We either are sheep, sheepdogs, or wolves. Those that choose to be a wolf should be punished and will be met on the field of battle by every sheepdog there is. Every sheep that is out there that chooses not to defend themselves, that's on them. I don't say that you have to carry. If you do, if you want to forego that right, that's your, that's your prerogative at the end of the day. But if you're a sheepdog, and you're willing to protect the sheep, and you're willing to charge out into the field to fight a wolf, a pack of them, then you should be able to do that. And our founding fathers understood that from the very beginning. Regardless of what our governor says, of what our New Mexico Supreme Court says, they still fall under the U.S. Constitution. The Second Amendment of well-regulated militia being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed. It's not, may not be infringed, it's shall not be infringed. So every gun control law out there is an infringement on our rights. And I agree with George Mason. They've done everything they can to make sure that our rights are slowly chiseled away until one day we find ourselves in a cage, enslaved. I'm done.
All right, anybody else need to say anything?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Milligan?
Commissioner Murillo, I love your passion for the Second Amendment, I really do. Like, um, Commissioner Brennan, Mayor Brennan, a couple of law enforcements, law enforcement officers reached out to me as well, too. Uh, majority of them were for it. Some felt that we were putting officers' safety at risk by just randomly letting anybody, um, concealed carry. That was their issue with that. As far as a vehicle, you know, your car's already an extension of your home, so you can put a firearm in your vehicle anywhere and conceal- in your vehicle anywhere and conceal it. The only issue that I have is we are considered the red dots of Santa Fe County, and I highly believe we will be punished and there will be litigation if this does move forward. We have a governor that is not a fan of Edgewood at all based on previous things. We have a representative that has cut us off financially because of past things that we passed. I love it. I think you're doing a great idea, but I don't think we can compete on politics at this level as much as I would love to with the powers that be. I think the minute that we pass this, we're going to run into another similar situation of getting funding cut from us, lawsuits being brought against the town because of it, and in the end, we would lose that battle. It's sad to say, New Mexico is more and more and less becoming, I'm not friendly towards the Second Amendment. It's going to be scary where things go in the future with it. So that's my two cents to have on it, but I love the passion. I see where you're coming from, but I just, I think we're playing with fire in an aspect. And I think that if we do pass this, then I honestly think that the powers that are above us are going to slap our hand for it. And that's all I have to say.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Marilla.
Commissioner Milligan, I appreciate your support, and I totally hear you. It definitely crossed my mind. I recognized that early on. So much so, I'd been working on this for the past year before I was even a commissioner, so it's something that I've been thinking about for a long time, and so your concerns are duly noted. Again, I just go back to our founding fathers. I forgot his name specifically, but one of the signers of the Declaration of Independence, he said he had the opportunity, both his sons were in a British prison, and basically with pretty much guaranteed you're going to die in that prison, right? And the British made him an offer and said, if you rescind your name from that Declaration of Independence, we'll let your boys go. He had integrity. He believed what the Declaration of Independence said. Our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. Our founding fathers sacrificed everything. Many of them went bankrupt. Several died. Only 10% is estimated of Americans during the Revolutionary War either fought or supported the effort. The sheepdogs fought. They took the risk. They laid their lives on the line. My ancestors, my bloodline, died for this so that I could exercise my right, so that when the time comes, I can exercise my right and lay my life down. It may be for people who don't care for me. It may be for people that hate me. It may be for people who are my enemies at the end of the day and will do everything to hurt me and my family. I accept that challenge. I'm willing to die for my wife. I'm willing to die for my children. I'm willing to stand up against tyrants who want to take away the rights of other people and enslave them. Not only did my ancestors fight for this country at the beginning, they fought to free So our representative, McQueen, if he'd like to withhold money from us, so be it. That's a character issue with him, not with me. People who, law enforcement officers, who are cowards and don't want to do their jobs because they're afraid of somebody exercising their constitutional right, maybe that's not the job for you. You want to go home tonight, snuggle in bed, be at your fireplace? Law enforcement's not for you. Military's not for you. If you're not willing to sacrifice, then you don't deserve it. If you're willing to give up your freedom of speech, which many people have, you don't deserve it. You're willing to give up your guns, you don't deserve your life. You're willing to give up things just so that it's a financial burden that you don't have to deal with, then you can be poor. That's my opinion. I'm not a rich man. I don't know what it's like to have a lot of money. But I do know one thing. I'm an American. I love this country. I love this town and this community. And at the end of the day, our lives are so brief. It's like the song Psalms, you know? The grass grows in the morning and it's withered by the evening. This is temporary. Fifty years from now, I'm gone. Fifty years from now, though, my grandchildren are going to have to deal with the consequences because I was a coward. I was afraid that I was going to, because I didn't get a permit. I was a coward because I wasn't willing to stand up against the higher-ups and financially ruin me because I was a coward. My children are now slaves. Like I said, there's sheepdogs and there's sheep. I say, let's be sheepdogs and let's fight the wolves. They want to come and attack us with holding money from us? Well, guess what? We'll figure out a different way to do it. We'll be more efficient. Not getting money, in my opinion, is a way for us to become extremely efficient. That's how we become innovative. That's how we become creative because we don't have something. We don't know what that is because we live in a world of luxury in America where we don't have to think, we don't have to research. We just type something into an app and all of a sudden, we're told 20 different answers. We take for granted so many different things. Look at the public school system. Our kids can't read in this state. We have more PhDs per capita than any other state, and our kids can't read because nobody was willing to stand up and say, no, enough. This is just one of those issues. People aren't willing to stand up and fight for our rights. People aren't willing to do the hard things. At the end of the day, this is right. This is what our forefathers would do. And I'm fairly confident that George Washington would look at me and say, great job. I'm sure if our forefathers saw what they were doing in the legislature this year, what our governors have done, what our presidents have done, what our Senate and Congress have done to this country, they'd be sick. But there still are patriots out there willing to fight. There still are patriots out there willing to do it. So let's not let permits get in our way. Let's not let finances get in our way, and let's do the hard thing. We're men. We were designed to put our hands into the evil to fight it. We were designed to blow out our chests and protect. I know we have two ladies here. And please don't respond because it's a very personal thing, but there's a difference between when you have a weak man and a strong man. A man who's willing to protect you and a man who's willing to turn his back on you and let you fend for yourself. Security is everything. I'm training my son to be a warrior poet. Not only is he going to be physically tough, emotionally tough, but he's going to be intellectually How am I supposed to raise him? And if I'm a coward, not willing to stand up against the higher-ups here in New Mexico who are trying to take away our rights, trying to neuter us, to make us weak? Because you know, at the end of the day, the governor's going to have the gun. At the end of the day, the governor uses her law enforcement and points their guns at us. We all hate taxes, no? Why do we pay our taxes? Because the federal government does it at the point of a gun. They'll send law enforcement into your home and get you with the gun. I don't have a problem with paying taxes. I think it's, it can be reduced for sure, but I don't have a problem with taxes. But if a tyrant decides, oh, you're not paying enough, come into your house with the gun. For the record, I think highly of both of you, Commissioner Brennan, Commissioner, I just, if we're not willing to fight over this, then what's the point? If we're not willing to take a hit, then what's the point? This town is full of people that love the Second Amendment. Know many of them. I know people that have more than 200 guns in their house. We're a town full of veterans, a town full of law enforcement that want to do the right thing. Let's let them do the right thing, man or woman. They can do the right thing. Let's let them do it. Because at the end of the day, again, it's the sheepwolves that are going to do it. So let's not defend them. Let's let them defend. Let's let them protect because the wolves are coming. I hear so many people cry about how much crime there is in Edgewood. Well, let's send the message that this is a town that you don't mess with. You want to come to Edgewood, you come here peacefully. You don't come to our stores and still. Our law enforcement's doing the very best job they can. But when that bad person comes at night, they're not going to be there. That bad person comes to my house, I'll be there, and mine will be protected. I think that's all I have to say.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Milligan.
Commissioner Marilla, would you be open to the suggestions from the municipal league of changing the language that they suggested?
Commissioner, I wouldn't just because we're talking about within town limits. And so the enforcement in the town limits would be the Edgewood Police Department. In my opinion, should somebody still go get a permit? Absolutely. Because you're going to run into Santa Fe County, you're going to run into state police if you travel outside of our town limits. So I would encourage people to get a permit, but I think we're, what we're doing here is letting other towns and other municipalities around the state know that we can protect our Second Amendment right. It just takes one to take that step. That's what I'd like Edgewood to do. So within town limits, in my opinion, you don't need a permit. Imperance still makes sense to me anyways. You can't use it as ID to get into a bar. Can't use it as ID to rent a vehicle. You can't use it as ID for anything. The only time you ever use is interaction with law enforcement. And of course, to be on a list now that the state knows who has guns. So that's why I'd be opposed to removing that statement.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Milligan.
We're currently, correct me if I'm wrong, we are a Second Amendment sanctuary city, aren't we? That there is a proclamation or something? Don't we have something?
Mr. Chair, that is correct. I believe it was passed in 2019.
Okay.
And that's why Town Hall is an open carry public building.
Commissioner Marilla, could you carry your voice up?
Yes, absolutely. I was asking, I was asking him to correct me if I was wrong, that if Edgewood was already a sanctuary city for the Second Amendment, that if we had a proclamation already in place, and they were saying that there is.
That was something six years ago?
2019, I believe. Yeah, the proclamation.
So there is something already out there, like a proclamation of protection.
I don't know. I have to remember. But it was basically, I forget, the government, the governors, you know, that they had a campaign and the cabinet administration, I remember the vote.
It was at the time that they were doing.
John Swain voted to adopt or create a new, I don't even know if that's voted yet.
Manager McCracken's looking it up right now. While she's doing that, I did also want to remind that, because it's a public hearing, public comment can be taken during it.
Say that again?
It's because it's a public hearing, we can have public, actually, it's public testimony.
We have to call for public testimony, yes. We don't have proclamations on our website, and it was a proclamation.
It was a proclamation.
I believe there was, yeah. I remember hearing about it.
Mr. Chair, sorry. I know that it was a proclamation. I'm pretty sure it was 2019 that made us a Second Amendment sanctuary. And I know we posted on Facebook a while back when some issues had come up, just to establish that that is something we had in place. I will keep looking for it. I know it's somewhere deep in my emails.
We do have, right, we do have the constitutional carry resolution.
Right.
But the resolution doesn't carry the weight of an ordinance, which is law.
A resolution carries the weight of law within the town. It applies to the town commission. So it's a little bit different than an ordinance.
While you're looking that up, everybody knows I'm retired Navy. It's been 20 years of my life, defending this nation, and I was ready to go into any battle at any place at any time. I had a commander once talk to me, and we were just having a chat, and he said something to me, which was the exact same thing my dad had told me a long time ago. He says, you need to know when to stand up to fight, you need to know when to duck, and you need to know when you got to back away. You have to have that ability because throwing yourself on the Because throwing yourself on the grenade for no particular reason isn't going to do anybody any good, it's going to blow you up. And sure, everybody's going to sing your praises, and you may be part of a song or something like that. I'm not looking to become part of any songs. This ordinance here, to me, for right now, the way it's written, and in the current state that we're at, is like throwing yourself on top of that hang grenade, the hand, eh, hang grenade for no, no particular reason right now. We're trying to pick a fight that at this particular moment, we don't have the ability to win. But that doesn't mean we cannot continue working on it and get to that point, we can get to that fight and win.
Oh, there it is, I just found it.
You know, military cemeteries are full of people that decided to go ahead and charge in regardless, without thinking completely through on how to win the battle. And that's what we need to do. We need to win the battle. We don't need to start throwing bodies out there for fodder. And I'm not, right now, I am not prepared to use the town of Edgewood as fodder. We, we have that, we have the ability to open carry. We still have the ability to go ahead and get our training so we can conceal, carry our weapons. But we still, and we also have that, the ability to continue on the fight. I do know at the federal level, they're starting to talk about constitutional carry. And they were starting to talk about it at the state level, but the legislator, legislation shot it down. Does that mean we stop this fight? No. We continue on the fight, we keep on coming at it at different angles. And the biggest part about that is getting the right people in the right places at the right time to be able to win the battle. Because until you have the proper forces in place at the right time, all you're doing is making a martyr out of yourself, and we're not helping anybody else in the process. I will never call a person a coward for stepping back and thinking something through to make sure that they're going through it the right way. And like I said, I was in the military, I was in the first Gulf War. We were at sea when my ship lost power, and we floated into a minefield. We did what we had to do to get power back to our ship and get us backed out of there. But that was the longest 15 minutes of my life. Would I do it again? Hell, yeah. If, if the country called me up and says, Ken, we need you back as a chief petty officer out there on a ship, running, running an engine room. I say, if you don't want mine and me being overweight right now, I'm there.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I deeply apologize, but we did find the resolution. It's actually a resolution, not a proclamation. And Adam's going to pull it up, but you guys can continue talking, just so when you see it pop up, that's what it is. Oh, look at that, I'm magic. Mr. Chair, this was signed by former Mayor Basset during his administration, preserving us as a Second Amendment town.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Milligan.
Mr. Morello, Commissioner Morello, were you aware of the preservation of this?
No, when I searched, the only thing I saw was a resolution, and it talked about open carry, but no permit. So that's the first time seeing it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Milligan.
Commissioner Morello, I, I love your passion. I love the way that you speak, the way you thought this out. And honestly, I think you may want to look at fighting this on a totally, totally different level, at a higher level.
Mr.
I mean, if it's like lobbying or whatnot, you have my support, but I give you kudos for it. I really, really, really do. But I, I think we need to get to that other level.
Actually, now that I'm reading it, yes, I did read this.
Okay.
Yes, I did. And the issue for me was the permitless carry. Where it says, nothing herein shall be held to permit the carrying of concealed weapons. And that's what I take issue with. Mr. Chair, I was not trying to imply, and I'm sorry if it came off that way, I do not think you gentlemen are cowards, far from. So I just wanted to be clear on that. I don't, I was not trying to imply that at all.
All right, unless we have anything else, I'll close out the hearing, and then we can move on to the discussion and action.
Does Mr. Morello want to make any comment during public hearing?
When we go into the motion and discussion part, that's only us, so this, this is the last time for you to go ahead and say anything.
Everybody's talking about divorce.
You probably got a few.
There's technology and, and other risk-type programs and things like that that other people are doing and have been doing that I think need to be explored, whether it be policy or, or things like that. I think this is a good, great learning experience on how to make this better, Commissioner, and to make it where it's sustaining and will actually protect the public. When we talk about the public, unfortunately, when you took that seat, your personal ideals are strict.
No, sir, they weren't. I, freedom of speech.
Okay, well, that, that's your, that's your, that's your place to stand. Okay, and that's fine, but it, but a, a real supporter of protecting a US citizen is they've advanced that skill where they can make neutral decisions that are, are good for them. Technologies, I still support TSA, and I get a lot of my training, and I've done a lot of the policy writing for keeping weapons off of airplanes and out of airports. We're under, and I, I do think you can realize your dream, your goal, much better with, with another look. When, if you've ever investigated an injury or a loss of property or a death, when it deals with the public, the FBI is involved. And the first thing the FBI asks is they want to see your plans. That's the first thing they ask. If you don't have plans, if you have a weak ordinance and things like that, they're going to figure that out real quick. When we go to investigate, after 20 years of spinning our wheels, trying to figure out what went wrong, our first questions are, where are your plans? We don't have them. Oh, where are they? Oh, let me look for them. Oh, that got dismissed because it was too hard. Okay? The second thing is based on that, and this is the worst thing, is administrators taking shortcuts because they have the administrative privileges to do so. So in closing, shortcuts, you're not going to win. Play by the rules, you can't go wrong. And I think you'll get your support, sir. I, you're passionate, that, that's great. And I think taking that passion and elevating it to, what can I do better to see this go through, rather than just hearsay? And in closing, when you are trying, when, when you're trying to protect government assets in a modern world, you've got to control the controllables. That's pretty easy to understand, right? Because everything is just, everything happens so fast, so quickly, and all that kind of stuff, and you've got to hope for the best. But what you can't control are the controllables, and those are the rules. So thanks for listening to me. I hope that, that I've been helpful. I live here, too. And Edgewood was a really, really safe place. And, and another way that, that, that is going to help us, and I've noticed this quite a bit in the last six years, we've got to stop, stop thumbing our nose at our neighbors. McQueen, schools, anti-abortion, we can't be thumbing our nose anymore. We're a small town. And we got to, we got to take care of, and I've said this once before, our prosperity and, and being safe. And, and the Constitution really, really forces on all of those things that your ideals believe in, the bottom line is keeping the citizens of the United States safe. So you guys ready to vote?
All right, so we're going to go ahead and close out the public hearing, go to discussion and action.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Morello.
I move to approve the proposed ordinance 2025-001 Constitutional Carry Ordinance, as is.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the ordinance 2025-01, the town of Edgewood Constitutional Carry Ordinance as written. Do I have a second? I'm going to go ahead and second this because I want it to go into discussion, and I think it is important that we all let the town know where we stand. So we'll go into the discussion part. Since this is an ordinance, it does take a majority vote of the town commission. The town commission consists of five seats. Regardless of how many commissioner members are present, it still needs the majority of five. So in order for this to pass, all three of us would have to vote yes. If two vote yes and one votes no, the ordinance fails because it is not a majority of the commission, and that is the statutes that are applied to ordinances. With that said, I think the passion and the intent of this ordinance is good. I don't think the timing is right. I don't think the environment is right. Will it ever be right? I don't know. But I do not feel that this is the time for us to go ahead and throw Edgewood out in the middle of the target range again. There's a lot of other things we need to take care of. I think with time and some modifications and changes, that this ordinance probably could come back in a different form. Personally, right now, I don't think that we're there yet, we're there, eh, we're there yet. I can't talk anymore. All right, anybody else for discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Milligan.
You pretty much stalled all the words out of my mouth. I don't think we're there at this time.
Calling you a thief.
It's been a long day for us all. And once again, I admire, gosh, the, the passion that you have for this, Mr. Morello. And I think, you know, we need to get it, this to the level that like, yeah, Thornton, our representatives are here, and you know, the fight that, fight that, we can get something done. And I back you 100%. You know, if we're going to go up to the roundhouse and fight and argue this, I'd be right behind you on that. But I, I have to view it as well, too. When I did take my oath of office, the, the people asked for this, do they want it? And I have to, I have to follow that, no matter what my personal belief is on that. So, but once again, I, as Commissioner Brennan said, I applaud the time and the effort that she put in this and the passion that she have for it. And yes, I do, I think every day that those rights are being infringed more and more on. And it's going to take a lot more action than something like this to, to get that, that done. So I look forward to working on something like this in the future, maybe differently or at a higher level. And that's all I have for now, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Morello.
Again, I appreciate you guys' points of view, and although I may disagree, that's fine, that's, this, what this country's built on is disagreement, and it was designed that way for a reason. Just a couple of things to address, maybe some of the comments earlier. I'm so glad our founding fathers wrote the Declaration of Independence. Colonies, 13 colonies, uniting to fight a world power, an empire on which the sun never set. That's my legacy. That will be my legacy at the end of the day. That's, that's the blood I came from. I do agree, right? Timing's not always ideal, right? I know my state senator, Kent Thornton's up there fighting SB 279 right now, and he's fighting it. This is a way to give him support. Hey, look at my town, look at Edgewood, they're fighting. To reiterate, 10% of the American population during the Revolutionary War fought or supported the war. Means 90% weren't willing to do it. Wasn't the right time. They threw tea in the harbor because of a tax rate increase. In my opinion, this is the right time. Nobody else is doing it. Nobody else is willing to stand up. No other town's willing to stand up. That Edgewood be the rallying cry. I understand martyrs die. I understand that. That's what it means to be a martyr, after Justin Martyr, right? That's where that name comes from. Died for his faith and for his belief in Jesus Christ, right? So that's why we use that terminology. Remember the Alamo, the rallying cry for Texas. The War of 1812, it was at Fort Henry, bodies upon bodies stacked to hold up the US flag against Armada, against British ship, against cannonballs and rockets. Oh, say, can you see? Was written by Francis Scott Keyes on that ship watching a was written by Francis Scott Keyes on that ship watching Americans being bombarded. Would it have been convenient to leave the fort? Absolutely. Would it have been convenient to live and fight another day? The men and women who built this country built a body to hold up, a mound of dead bodies to hold up that flag. They start seeing the flag go down. They ran up there knowing that they were concentrating all firepower on that flag. They shot that flag. They saw the cannons going after that flag. They had ship after ship shooting at it. Those men and women ran out there and held up that flag. The men and women who sacrificed everything so that we could have it all are probably disgusted because we're not willing to take a punch. We need to take a punch. You don't go into a fight expecting not to get hit. Do I expect to be hit? It's not fair that Aunt Thornton's up there fighting and taking hits, and I get to go home and sit comfortably, and we're not taking a hit. So easy to vote for somebody and let them get beat up. Ah, you could've done it better. You chose the wrong time. I'm, I'm willing to take the hit. I'm willing to get smacked around. As our forefathers said, "Our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor." What else do we have? So just to close, at the end of the day, I'm thankful for our forefathers going against an empire. I'm thankful for the forefathers who held up our flag. Thank you to the men and women who served this nation and died for this nation. Whether you agreed with the wars, whether you agreed with the tactics, those men and women, they bled for this flag. And to me, a financial hit is nothing compared to the blood shed. Red, white, and blue. Our flag reminds us every day when we swear allegiance to it, when we pledge allegiance to it, when we're seeing the Star Spangled Banner. We look at that flag, the red, supposed to remind us of the blood shed. When we're seeing the Star Spangled Banner, we have to remember the man who wrote that and what he saw at Fort Henry. And that flag never touched the ground. The bricks were bodies, and the mortar was blood. Thomas Jefferson even said, "The tree of liberty should be watered from time to time with the blood of tyrants and of patriots." This world is violent. This world is evil. This world also has people that are willing to go and do the fighting so the other can live peacefully. So I think residents of the town of Edgewood, I've spoken with many, are highly in favor of this. I talk to people from all kinds of different districts, not just mine in Edgewood. People I went to school with that still live here. So with that, I, with that, I just say, "God bless America and all the men who are willing to sacrifice when there was no light at the end of the tunnel." And just so you gentlemen know, there is no hard feelings on my part.
Done?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I didn't wanna start talking if you weren't done. We gotta get in the habit, when we get done, we say, "Yield back."
There you go.
That makes life a lot easier for the chair.
Right.
All right. Unless there's an objection, unless there's an objection, we will close discussion and move to the vote. Hearing done, will the deputy clerk please take a roll call vote?
Commissioner Murillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Milligan.
Nay.
Commissioner Brennan.
Nay.
Motion fails.
All right. I do, I do think, though, that this ordinance will have its time. And I just, I don't think the time is right now. It is a, it's very important to be able to choose your battles and choose your time when you're gonna have your battles. And let's hope that we get to the point that we can get, we can bring this back. And I agree with you about Senator Thornton. He's fighting the good fight up there for us. I'm sorry that I'm not up there fighting the good fight for us, but that's life, and I accept that. For myself, I don't mind standing in, in the way of the gunfire. You know, like I said, I'm military. That's part of the job description. I'm just not, at this time, willing to put the town in the crosshairs. All right. That brings us to the end. Move that we adjourn this meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Milligan.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moves in second for adjourn, all in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. This meeting is adjourned.
Do what?